At a clock.
Little, little.
This time I will call the City of Perry work session for December the sixteenth to order, please. We have a quorum. Item three is items of review and discussion. Three A is the Department of Economic Development. Three A one is a free removal and replacement request. Ten, our thousand twenty-eight and a thousand thirty, Ball Street, or ten twenty-eight or ten thirty, Ball Street. Mrs. Harden.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time tonight. We do have a property owner here, Dave Corson, and we have a request by Mr. John and a new business prospect, Evan Akers, who owns the Cashill Shop and Bakery in Mainville. And they identified a Perry location, and a lease agreement is contingent on this project that we're presenting this evening. So we'll get started. So they're requesting the removal of this tree right here, which is on Ball Street. It's an oak tree, and it does hinder the facade on the building for signage, as well as being able to paint and actually access up there. It's two addresses, two properties. This is where Body Tech Gym used to be. The gym is now closed, and the building's been split in half to the two addresses. And so we do have a good tenant, the Cashill Shop and Bakery, that wants to take this spot. We've been talking to them since February, and the company changed hands. So Evan Akers has purchased it from his mother in July, and they'd like to have a March first opening day, and their lease agreement is contingent on this. Here's another angle of it, some other concerns of how the tree gets into the communications and power lines up here. This is another angle, just from the street view across the street. And we did verify with city staff that this is in the city right away. And when the tree is trimmed, this is what it looks like on this side where the... Let me make it green. It's not turning green. Anyways, when it's trimmed, our landscape manager, Ansley, said that eventually this tree will die when it's cut down this much away from the power lines. The request is also to replace that tree with a crape myrtle or two, because the rest of Ball Street does have crape myrtles, so it would align more with the street scape that you currently see on Ball Street. We do have a tree board fund for contracted tree removal and pruning under the city budget. Any questions?
What questions do you have relative to removal of the tree?
Is this request within the, within accordance of our tree ordinance?
Right. What can we go now?
Yeah, so the tree ordinance does not specifically address sidewalks. However, if this were a street tree on private property, then yes, it would be acceptable as long as it was replaced. Under the, our landscape ordinance for street trees, we require one shade tree, like an oak, for every forty feet of frontage. But we also understand that there are overhead obstructions, and so there's a provision in that code that allows understory or ornamental trees like crape myrtles to be used in those situations, but we require those one for every twenty feet. So it's a, because they're smaller trees, we need more or less spacing there. So just extrapolating that, taking out this shade tree would require two understory trees.
Okay. Is there space to do that up there along there to get it away from the face, I mean, get it out of the facade of, will we move those, so that you put those spaces out so that permit the facade to be visible?
Right. So I think that there probably is. I haven't looked at that specifically, but between the spacing and then as, as they grow, we need to, the city needs to look at how we keep them pruned and trimmed so that they don't grow into the building and they're properly limbed so that the visibility of the buildings are there.
Too much pretty much of that.
As I remember, when those other crape myrtles were planted, oh now, there's a gas line down there too.
Gas lines under there? There's gas and water in some of those areas.
When we planted, there's other crape myrtles.
Right.
Oh now, well, they do more far, there were some gas lines there.
But this is much higher, because if you, well, there's crape myrtles.
Yeah, I'm just saying be aware of that. I don't know how deep those gas lines.
Well, I look at the ones down, if you're talking about down there by Hazard and Marine, you're dropping all the way down to the street level where those are planted. That oak tree is much higher, as I remember.
I'm not sure the depth of the gas line.
Yeah, we have to just make sure what we, you know, we make sure we don't have any problems with those, or any city, any utility at all. So what other questions do you have?
What are your plans? You planning to saw it down, or you planning to saw it down and then get the roots up before you move it?
The request that you have, and you should have backup documentation from the perspective of business, as well as the property owner, they're requesting that the city remove the tree. So however you guys determine whether you chop it and leave a stump, or take out the whole root bearing, I mean, that would be what you guys determine, or whatever landscape management determines. They're just requesting that the majority of the tree be removed so that they can do a great facade exterior and provide a new business that's not, or professional services and that kind of thing.
You can take the stump, but it's going to be a lot more trouble than just sawing it down. Because the roots up under the walkway, sidewalk, I don't know how broad the roots of an oak tree that size is going to have a good spread of it.
Yeah, I talked to our landscape expert. What that would entail, I'm not the expert.
It would be difficult.
I'm sorry?
It would be difficult to get rid of the entire root ball, for sure. But it might be enough that we could clear out a space. Usually, when a rotten tree, if you plant a new tree in that space, it'll take over and do just fine. So as long as we get enough for that new tree to have the roots established, we should be okay. But we, it's just going to be, once we get started, seeing how it goes.
You would have to probably grind it out, like part of it, so we have a plan.
Yeah.
I don't think that you could plant it right where that oak tree is. I think you'd have to go on either side of it a little bit to avoid the big roots. I'm concerned also about the roots heaving the sidewalk up, because that's...
It will.
Eventually, you know, that will happen with oak trees, so.
You know, that needs to be taken into consideration.
I don't know if it'll probably take it off.
Yeah. But I think we'll have to leave it up to the landscape manager to make sure that we do it correctly, and then when we go back in where we do place the crape myrtles, that we're very careful about not interrupting any of the city utilities or services. But they're professional at that, and I'll leave that to the professionals myself. What other questions would you have relative to removing this specific tree? Mr. Gilmore, any comments or thoughts?
I think for all the reasons stated, the tree needs to go. What I think you need to have is your motion that you state as replace just like we would for the private sector. So that means that two ornamental trees would have to go in and replace it. On their exact location, I don't know for sure. It's where they're going to fit to look like, so it may not be the existing location. Because whatever, you know, going back on Mr. Hunt's point and this gentleman's point, there will be at least some grinding out there, because it's going to have to, Rick's going to have to go back and replace, if it's not where the tree's planted.
Do we need to vote on this tomorrow?
No.
Or do you need consensus?
If you all consent to proceed, then we'll go ahead with it. We'd be contacted as the owner to say, yes, you agree to remove it.
You have consensus to move forward, with removal of the tree and then replacing it under the same standards that are required by the tree board.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm with the prospect and property owner now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Corson, for coming this evening. We appreciate it. Item three B is office of the city manager. Three B one is consider request for additional payment for the 2019 L-MIG contract. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, in your packet is a copy of the November fifteenth, 2019, letter from Reeves Construction, in which they are requesting the city's consideration to pay them an additional eighty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. They put it politely, basically they are begging, which you may have noticed from the text, they made a mistake, did not follow what our requirements are, and they paid, they resurfaced an additional street. The administration's recommendation to you all would be to deny, because the error was no fault of the city. Previously, you may remember, I don't know if it's just the Northside name or not, but Northside Road had a similar situation come up, and we said no to the contractor that time, and I'd recommend to you, better be no this time. The other concern I have is that you possibly would be setting a precedent as to, well, yes, I know it wasn't in the contract.
Okay. Any questions relative to the request from the contractor to pay for a road that wasn't, that was paid, it wasn't in the contract?
No, 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 no. They missed pay.
Is that a bite?
No, no, no. Biteable, true.
Mr. Hunt?
I have a problem with it both ways. I think they're at fault. We are not blaming it anyway, but it sure does hurt when you're in business and you make a mistake. You just have to pay for it.
We don't have to pay for it. Bad decisions.
Mr. Albridge?
A mistake, and, you know, it's unfortunate, but sometimes when they have three or four trucks backed up when they're finished, they may be doing this to just see, you know, the trucks out, and we go three miles with it, and maybe a game they play all the time, I don't know.
Except this was the first street that they did. This was the first street that they did.
Okay.
But, but, but Mr. Albridge's point could be correct, because if you take a look at this, this is one of these major, almost like countywide contracts.
Countywide.
You have Byron and Centerville, Houston County, Warner Rock, you know, they're all together in that.
Pay everything in the county's hands. It's on a common contract, so.
And they've been in business for a long time, too. And that's right. See, they, they know. I had a pen whip for them, and I tell you what, they've been there, they know what's going on.
I'd be curious to see if they do this with other institutions on a somewhat regular basis.
Mr. Jackson?
Thank you.
Jones?
I agree with the city manager.
Mr. Gilmore, we have, there's a consensus that we deny the claim. Item three B two is consider adjustment to conditions for rentals at the Perry Arts Center. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, we're just bringing this to you for your consideration. Currently, we require at the Perry Arts Center that if any organization is going to be coming in and having alcohol, then they are required to have a law enforcement officer on site, which is what they pay for as part of their rental cost. We have been operating the center very successfully for at least the last five years or so, which you may remember, it's almost always booked all the time, and we have not had any issues relative to whether a group has alcohol or whether it does not. We are in the process of installing a security system, a security system maybe, I'm not quite sure on that, for the Arts Center as well. So the administration recommends to you that we remove that condition about having to have a police officer there for events at Perry Arts Center. You know, we're not talking about any of our other facilities, but at the Arts Center. The other big issue with this is the strain that it puts on the Perry Police Department. You know, Major Phelps is here to answer any questions on that. As you may remember or have heard, we have a number of events that are requiring support. We have attempted to contract alcohol security on this as well, so we don't have to use our own officers. That's kind of a hit or miss, as I understand, Bill, relative to that, and we think that'd be beneficial for our officers as well, not to have that one obligation. We certainly will monitor it, just like we do with any other type of use or group, and if there's some type of problem or some type of group that seems to, that we have issues with and everything, then we go in and address that at a particular time. You may remember, most of our uses and everything that have the alcohol are similar to the Perry area chamber commerce and groups like that.
You're saying not have an officer even when you have beverages?
Correct. Well, that's the only time, if they have alcohol. If they don't have alcohol, there's no officer there.
I was thinking you had, have it eaten away, you had to have an officer.
No, sir, it's just...
Just for the use of alcohol. Fearless.
Right. Previous council had, had put that in, because we were just getting in the rental business, and they had some concerns about potential economic problems, but with our track record, it has not, and so we recommend to you all to make this change.
Comments?
Well, I, I would agree to the change, but I think we just need to do it initially on a trial basis, to see how it works. So far, we have not had any problems, but the people that, that I've talked to that rent the facility like the fact that the officer's there. So I, I would say, yeah, I agree that the change is necessary, but I still think we need to revisit this.
This, this wouldn't preclude them from having an officer there.
I know, but, you know, since we're pulling ours, and, and, and it has been part of the contract, we would have to let everybody know that that's no longer part of the contract, and, like I say, and let's revisit it. I don't have a problem removing him, but the security of the fact that, that he was there had made a big difference to a lot of folks. I like that we're putting in a system, and I'm sure it's going to work perfectly, but I still would like to revisit it.
What time is running? I agree with you. What, how long?
How long is the trial period? You could do it for a quarter.
Yeah.
We can do it for the first quarter, and then let the police department monitor it, see if we get any complaints, if we have any incidences there, then we could revisit and say, okay, that doesn't work, and we can come back with a different recommendation.
Would you, would you also want to put in a caveat that if the group requests they have one?
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, can't they hire their own? I mean, or do we want to manage, if they request one, it has to come through us?
I would like to build that question, with that stipulation, say, since I've been in, I want to bring some alcohol that was in there, or say, I would like to have an officer. Do I have to pay for the officer myself? You know, that should be the stipulation, let people know, but in the meantime, going back with Mr. Brian Gray saying, if the system's set up and they want to, and call it how they behave you, like you said, we're going to try on a trial basis. If they do well, then we won't have to, but then somebody might request, they'd like to have an officer there, and they want to pay for the officer being there, and so I get that, we keep them in the bill, to, to us decide whether one of the guys off duty will want to be, want to make some extra money or something. I don't know how they have to go, I mean, so that's something that we have to look at, you know, I mean, for the possibility.
But that, that'd be fine. Going back to, I think, the other question, no, I would not recommend that they want to have an officer, they just go out and get some of the...
No, no, no.
Or that somebody's...
Make sure that's clarified.
But I think if you provide them the option, then they'll go and check and see. If it turns out that a majority of the people who are renting decide they want to do that, then we may have to just go back and adjust relative to that.
Is it incorporated?
If it turns out not very many want to, then that could be something.
Is it incorporated in the contract, the amount that they're going to have to pay, and it's all part of the...
Right. So if you make this adjustment, the contracts automatically, I mean, it won't affect anybody who already has a contract, but any of the future contracts, at least my understanding of the discussion, they will be asked, would you like to have the option of having a law enforcement officer? If you want that law enforcement officer there, it's going to cost you X amount an hour.
And you can't provide your own.
Correct.
You said we have that, cannot provide their own. They have to make sure they understand that.
I agree, so I'd like to get someone that has no experience, no training.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it comes through our police department.
Yes.
So what other questions do you have? I hear that there's a consensus around the table that we're willing to do it on a limited basis to determine what might or might not happen from that, and if a person does want a law enforcement officer, they can request that, and that it comes through our department. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Okay. We have consensus to move forward with those stipulations. Item three B three is establish a moratorium on permitting of conservation subdivisions and land use. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. And council, we are requesting you to authorize a moratorium. If you elect to do so, it would be on tomorrow's agenda. That moratorium would be to put a hold on accepting any type of conservation subdivisions. The reason for that is, you may remember, Planning Commission had authorized a task force, which is in the process of meeting, to deal with the issue about streets that have a lot of parking on them, and issues about public safety and school, if you remember what we're talking about on that. You know, for them to get by. Conservation subdivision, it current, in our current regulations, reduces the roadway right off the bat, which can cause problem along the lines that we're talking about. The second thing, based on the experience that we have with current regulations, and Mr. Wood can provide more detail on this, but you wind up with a lot of very odd little small shaped lots, that when you take the overall density, it fits the requirement, but you basically have something totally useless that's not really conserving or being taken care of, like a weed patch, you know, between two houses, or whatever the case may be. The reason we're requesting a moratorium on this is that, talking with Mr. Wood, we're getting a number of applicants coming in for land disturbance permits, we're getting more people coming in requesting questions about annexation. You remember, we just talked about some significant properties possibly coming in, and we would like to have this issue addressed before it is requested or becomes very popular and becomes a, a problem. We don't, or I don't anticipate this is going to be a very long process. You may remember when we did the tiny houses, and when we did the apartments, the moratorium lasted maybe, I think, about two months, maybe three months, something like that. Well, it goes through, makes a determination about what's, what's going to be done, and through the Planning Commission and the hearings and those type of things. But I think it'd be timely for us to act on that. We don't get a whole bunch of them, but with all this new activity, there could very well be a lot of interest in developers, because it provides them, bottom line provides them more lots on a smaller parcel.
I think, I think that you're right on that, because, see, we need to get it in place, because we don't want them to come and say, because we doing this, then you're adding this to it. So if we have it already in place, and when they come in, and Mr. Wood can show them what we're going on, and so they'll know upfront that there's something we get them automatically put in there, so we already got it in there.
The other thing with that, too, Mayor and council, is if a developer is very interested in something like that, it still has the opt, the option of a PUD type of development, and that provides a little more control relative to watching on some of that type of stuff, rather than just kind of general set us down.
Mr. Wood?
Mayor and council, as far as the timeframe, I don't remember if Mr. Gilmore and I have discussed this, but just looking at the timeframe for the task force getting its work completed, and then the time that it would take to draft some revisions, get those to the Planning Commission, and then to you, I'm expecting that that would probably be, come to you in your May meetings. So this is probably a six-month timeframe that we'd be looking at here.
You're saying six months before we start the...
No, six months before we have everything in place for your, and adopt it.
That's what I'm saying. Is six months before we, we can put this moratorium in effect? No, the moratorium will exist the entire six months while they do their work. We would not approve a conservation subdivision during the next six months.
If this has become effective when? If we pass it?
If you pass it tomorrow, it's effective.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah, Wednesday.
Okay. All right. Yeah, tomorrow, Monday, we both agree. What will a builder say about this? That, I mean, one that's roaring?
Well, I think there are a number of lots out there already that the builders have. I think they're beginning to run out of those. We did, the Planning Commission did approve last week, a new conservation subdivision, that can go through the process. They can certainly do a traditional subdivision, or as Mr. Gilmore has pointed out, they can come in and go through a PUD process, if they're really anxious to get moving in that, within the six-month period. If we can, if we can move it faster than that, we will, but my thought is that the task force is not going to be completed and have a, to a point that they can make a recommendation until February, so that'll give us March to get revisions to the ordinance prepared to get to the plant, to do the required public notice, and have Planning Commission review them in April, and their recommendation come to you in May, so. But I think, from a builder's standpoint, they're only interested in the lots. Obviously, if we're running short of lots, then somebody's going to be looking for new subdivisions, and there are a couple of those out there already that are beginning to, to open up or get started as well.
My issue is I do not want to slow down progress.
I understand.
We're roaring now. We don't need to slow them down.
Correct.
Because they can go somewhere else.
But it's very rare that we get this request. We oftentimes get a PUD request, or you get a conventional, but this one that came through the other day, I think is the first one that I have known about in the ten years that I've served, and so it's a very rare request.
We did have, actually, two others earlier this year. One is the second phase of Wind River.
Right.
They redesigned that as a...
Conservation.
Conservation subdivision, and I would expect that's going to be moving forward. They did submit plans for, for construction. And there was another one off of Frank Satterfield that was approved. We have not seen any construction drawings on that one. So there are some preliminary plaits.
There's some interest in there.
There's preliminary plaits out there that if people run into not having lots, there's opportunity for those to move forward. That can, that should hold us over for, for six months.
So are you saying those two are grandfathered?
Yes. Anything that has been approved prior to your moratorium, if you, if you so go forward with that, would be allowed to continue.
Now, you mentioned, he mentioned one, and you mentioned two. Is that three?
So there are three that I'm aware of. Three, yes, three that have approval, besides the ones that have been out there that are continuing, like Lake Forest was approved in, in 2006 or so. They are continuing with phases of that, so that one will be able to move forward. Legacy Park is another one in that situation that's allowed to continue forward. We do have three preliminary plaits, approved preliminary plaits for new conservation subdivisions or portions of subdivisions.
Is Legacy a PUD or a conservation? I thought they were PUDs.
It may be a PUD, but it was, it's designed like a conservation subdivision.
What, what would be your definition of a conservation subdivision?
So in a conservation subdivision, you are allowed the same number of lots, essentially, that you would be, for example, if you're in an R1 zoning district, you have to have a minimum lot size of fourteen thousand square feet. So if you were to take a piece of land and lay it out with your streets and lots that are all fourteen thousand square feet, you would, in a conservation subdivision, you get essentially the same number of lots, but there's no minimum lot size in exchange for conserving fifty percent of the overall land. So there's some advantages to that, if it's done, if they're done correctly, to keeping that open space, but there's also, as we're beginning to see in looking through this, this parking issue, is that those smaller lots may be, and the smaller roadway, may be contributing to some of the concerns and issues that we're seeing. So you're not really getting more density, you're just doing it in a smaller area, in exchange for that conserved open space. So...
Hypothetical, please, sir. If I had 100 acres and I could put X number of houses on it, just like it is now.
So, yeah, so if you had 100 acres and you could put, let's say you can put 200 lots on it, in a conventional subdivision, you would be able to, in a conservation subdivision, still put those 200 lots, but only on 50 acres. The other 50 acres would have to be preserved as open space. That's what a conservation subdivision is.
Help me understand that now. You said if I had 100 acres, I could build the same 100 acre worth of houses, but on 50 acres and leave the other as green space?
Yes.
Or some...
Yes.
Well, I'd like that a lot. I would build a whole 100 acres.
Well, they're certainly popular. And, and I think a lot of that comes into being when you have 100 acres and let's say you have a string running through the middle of it, or some steep topography, or, you know, something that is, I don't know, maybe you've got a historic mansion, that you want to conserve that and preserve that view or that piece of history or that sensitive area of land. That's really what a conservation subdivision is intending to try to address, are some of those potentially undevelopable, undevelopable, or ecological or historic properties.
Or if you have a lot of wetlands. If you were in a bunch of, have a large acreage with a lot of wetlands in it, that's really not buildable. This allows you to, to put that in green space and then build only buildable lots with the same density.
Put in more buildable lots.
And the thing is, you know, I think the conversation, and just as my understanding, is that we've had some PUDs where there's not adequate parking required. So everybody ends up parking on the street. And the streets are narrower, and so it creates some real issues. So I think all Mr. Wood's doing is say, "Give us time to go back and look at some of the terms and conditions of those and let us come back with a recommendation to you that might be more suitable for us and you."
I would love to have a builder in, that entails what, what advantage it would be to go through.
Well, I can tell you, they are, they like it because it's smaller lots, there's less, that's what I guess the, the market is really kind of pushing towards, are smaller lots that there's less upkeep. And the conservation aspect, the, the open space is an attraction to, to buyers as well, although they all seem to put up privacy fences and block themselves off from it. But generally, the builders like the smaller lots better than the larger ones.
But I think your point is they have the option of going with a PUD, which is the smaller lots if they're so choose to go that. I don't see how this moratorium is going to stifle any kind of growth.
This is, this is not ruling this kind of subdivision out for the future. It's giving us time to rework it.
You want to sue the bucket gate to come through?
Yeah, we'd like to have it.
That's right. We don't want cars off by the road and then everybody going to sue them for education because they got their, something knocked off and all.
Going back to Mr. Hunt's point, that Brian talked, the builder doesn't care. The builder's going to have X amount of lots and they're going to buy the lots. The real person who cares is the owner, the property and the developer, because the normal thing with the conservation deal with that, if you have a standard R1 or R2 subdivision in that example, the land may allow you 200 lots. But as Brian talked about, the topo and all that type of stuff, you're not going to be able to put in 200 lots because you have that frontage restriction, you have lot size restriction, all that type of stuff. So if you come in with a conservation subdivision, then you're able to adjust those lots more so you get more lots than what you would normally be allowed under regular zoning going with a piece of property. If you were, if you were talking about a flat soybean field, that's just totally flat and everything, it probably wouldn't make any difference and you wouldn't, I don't think, you wouldn't have them coming in for a conservation. They'd just come in for an R2, put in those streets, you know, whatever it is that they want. The other thing, though, maybe kind of dropping off now, but a very important thing like Brian was talking about, is the market sale with this. Even people putting up those fences, if they can say that they live in a conservation subdivision or they believe that with that conservation subdivision, they're going to have their property, there are going to be some green space, it's not going to be built on, and then you're going to have your neighbor coming in some distance, everybody with me? Some distance further back. And you get that buffer from any other type of subdivision coming in instead of your neighbor's fence coming up right next to yours. And that's what the original attraction deal was, I believe, on these conservation subdivisions. Trade-off that was made for that is that, getting back to the heart of the issue, is you have a smaller right-of-way. And that's where we start running into the rub because you don't have a corresponding drop-off necessarily of lots. Everybody with me on that, because of this conservation hike and rearranging? Now, the other thing we found, when this is done, is numerically, yes, it comes out to that, but you wind up with all these little odd-shaped pieces that nobody really owns, nobody wants, but neighbors all complain because it's not taken care of. And it just causes a problem.
So what is your desire?
To give a moratorium.
Put the moratorium in place. Mr. Albrecht?
I would, I'd hand owner to come in and I see his side of the floor, I'll say, "Yes."
So, I get... Mr. Mayor, members of council, if I could, while we haven't discussed moratorium with the task force, there are builders, landowners, developers, as well as representatives from the school board, fire department and so forth, on our task force. And we've had two meetings to discuss the parking issue. At our last meeting last week is when we discussed the potential correlation between some of these concerns and the conservation subdivisions. So while we haven't discussed with them the moratorium, they are aware of the issues that potentially conservation subdivision in their current form is, is...
Is creating issues.
Yes, sir.
And the reason that your task force was put together was to address these issues?
Yes, sir.
And we have builders and developers and landowners and the fire department, everybody is sitting around the table talking about these issues with community development.
That's correct.
And what did the landowners say?
Well, they recognize that there's an issue and that conservation subdivisions may be one of those, one of the potential issues that we can correct.
Do you have a, an example that comes to your mind that, that's here in the city?
I can tell you that the subdivision that is currently, appears to be, the, the, one of the issues is Lake Forest.
What is that?
That is on Langston Road, just off of Highway 127. It was approved and started development in the mid-2000s. Really, in the last maybe three years, has really taken off. And we are seeing, and it's interesting, we've, I went through, I heard from the fire department that there are issues in, in several subdivisions. They didn't point out which ones. I also heard that ambulance services are having issues. And then, so I went out and, and surveyed all of the subdivisions in the city during a 6:30 to 8:30 PM timeframe. I didn't see any substantial parking issues that would hinder access. We talked about that and, and actually, Mr. Swan, lives in Lake Forest and made the comment, "Well, it's not during that timeframe. It's earlier in the morning when the school buses are trying to get in." So sometime between midnight and 5:00, 6:00 AM is when the parking issue. And so that's...
So there's cars parked on the curb?
There are cars parked in the street, side by side.
On the sidewalk.
On the sidewalk, but they are blocking the ability for an ambulance, a fire truck, a school bus to actually get through some of these streets. That's where we're looking at, what are the causes of that? Is it something in land development regulations that we can address to make that improvement or are there other things that we need to deal with? But Lake Forest is, whether it's a conservation subdivision or a PUD, it is designed like a conservation subdivision. And it is definitely one that is having issues right now.
I'd recommend you go out there Saturday morning at 8:00.
Okay.
I can tell you, that's where all the cars are there and it's, there is, it's really, he lives out there, it's, it's constraining him.
Doc, I'll add that I've had a couple of calls, or more than a couple of calls, asking if the city can tow the cars to continue and park on the street. So it is a recurring issue.
What about all the, about the car parking on the street?
It's allowed.
It's allowed unless you come back and say you can't.
And see, that's one of the answers that some of the developers come in, "Well, y'all just need to tell them they can't park on those streets." Now, I'm not elected official, but I don't want to be out there telling people in the whole subdivision that they can't park on the streets when they don't have enough room for their vehicles because of the subdivision regulations that have been allowed, which goes back to why we have the task force and that type of stuff. Another example, maybe, I think even better than Lake Forest, is riding subdivision off of Santa Fe Road, which is a little narrow slot that just goes straight back and has conservation property on the side there. As far as I know, that's a mess getting through all the time.
What's the subdivision?
Riding subdivision.
The riding one on Santa Fe? Well, the one that's up on Langston too, the first one that you come to off the left.
Off, off Langston.
Yeah, Langston, it's not riding, it's the one that's got the straight shot through there. I don't know, what's the name of that subdivision?
Oh, oh, Langston Place.
Yeah, Langston, go out to Langston Place. That's the one that has really created a lot of problems.
So the size of the lot dictating the driveway length and that?
Yes, sir. So if you, our standard ride of width is 60 feet and you have a road width in there of about 27. So when you reduce the right-of-way from 60 feet to 40 feet, that's 10 feet less on either side. And then in the conservation subdivision, the front setback also gets reduced from 25 to 20, I believe it is. So there's an additional, so there's 15 feet of additional driveway than a standard subdivision as opposed to a conservation subdivision, right off the bat. So there, you know, we need to take a look at that. We may need to look at the density, we may need to look at the open space. There are a number of things. I will say that in Langston Place, Rippling More Way is the name of the road, there were probably a half dozen houses built in there during the 2000s, the mid-2000s when it was first started, that have single, well, excuse me, a double driveway going up to a double car garage. Since then, all of the rest of the houses have triple-wide driveways with an extra parking pad beside the garage, and there's still a parking issue. So I don't know if there's people just not wanting to park in this, in the driveway, if it's more convenient for them to park on the street than the driveway, if they're saving a space for somebody that's coming home later to park at driveway. So those are kind of some of the questions that we're looking at and some of the things that we're trying to analyze to determine what, from a land use perspective, we need to try to address to address this issue. And the other thing to keep in mind is that we are looking at future subdivisions. We've still got to go back and figure out how to deal with the existing ones.
Doc, you said, Doc, you said the existing ones were grandfathered?
They are, but they still have a problem. So we've got to figure out, we can't go in and change the right-of-way and add more parking. So how do we deal with the parking issue in those existing subdivisions? And that's going to have to be something other than a land use issue, but solution.
When would you, you all, the panelists committee, when will you all have a recommendation for us?
We will have, we are working right now to have all of our data collected by the end of this year so that the engineers that are on the task force can then take a look at that. And I suspect that the, by February, the task force will have a recommendation. And we will, we can bring that back to you all, but I'm expecting that based on that recommendation, I'll go to work making some recommended changes to the ordinance to then file as a text amendment to get to Planning Commission in March, excuse me, in April.
So is, is the timing work just going to be made before we get the...
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
So you're saying May to, for what?
For the moratorium. Go in place on Wednesday and stay in place until May until you can get it all through the planning and zoning approval and then to, to us and so on.
So you're saying the, the, the moratorium would go into effect immediately after we vote?
Right. But the ones that are already approved, we go ahead and vote. All we can do is put it on a moratorium so that the task force can get their work done, recommendations can come back to us. Do we have consensus to give? Put this on for a vote tomorrow night?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Gilmore, would you add that to the agenda for tomorrow night's meeting?
Yes, sir.
Item four is council member items. Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. John? Mr. Spine Grace? Mr. King? Mr. Hunt? Anything to say?
The Evergreen Street, A okay now? Not about the hedges.
I do... Yes, sir. This is, sir, for me today, they were taken care of. They're taken care of? Yes, sir. Thank you.
A okay. Okay. Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith?
No, sir.
This do be anything to say this evening, boys?
Yes, sir. We will be down to the house this evening to discuss...
Yeah, we're also for personnel. We're going to add that. We're going to vote. Okay. Item five is department head and staff items. Mr. Bryant?
Presenting.
Mr. Fitz, anything to say? Mr. McMurray, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wood?
Nothing further.
Chief?
Yes, sir. Just one...
Mr. King, sit down. Get Mr. King.
Just one quick item. We'll let Mayor and Council know that this Thursday, we'll be picking up our parade, or excuse me, our poster contest winner at her house about 7:30 in the morning and driving her in the fire truck over to Westfield School. So if any of y'all would like to be on hand at the pickup location or drop-off location, there'll be some press there. If you want to be there, be involved in that, we'd love to have you. But it'll be Thursday about 7:30 in the morning.
I think I could be there at the drop-off.
We're expecting you to be there. But that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. King, I'm sorry, I was, they were blocking you there, so I apologize. Mr. Clark?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Worthington?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Swan?
Thank you, sir.
Pleasure services this evening. Mayor?
Nothing.
Ms. Harden, anything?
Um, yes, Mayor and Council, I have a special guest I'd like to introduce you to this evening. And to me, his announcement just really comes as an early Christmas present to both the Perry residents and future visitors. So I'll have Mr. Curtis George come up and he's got some exciting news to share.
It's exciting for us. My name's Curtis George and I am one of the members of the LLC Boeheim Restaurants. My partner is Steve Wimpel, who bought a place out in Fort Valley about 15, 20 years ago, fell in love with Perry, and today we finally closed on the property at 807 Kittle Street, the former Rusty's. And we are going to open a new restaurant there called Orleans on Kittle Street. Hopefully, we'll be open by Thanksgiving next year. We're going to try to do it as local as possible. We've hired JMA Architecture as our architects. We're talking with Interstate Construction about them doing the build-out. And we're going to try to be as local as we can be. And I'd just like to say hello, thank you for welcoming us into the community.
You're welcome.
And now I've got to go back and see what the locksmith... I could rattle off a lot of educational acronyms, but yours are an entirely different John Drucker. So I'll be studying up on those. Fascinating. I'm eager to start, very excited and honored to be part of this group.
I'm glad to have you with us this evening.
I'm going to try my best to follow in Mr. Jackson's footsteps.
Speaking of Mr. Jackson, tomorrow will be Mr. Jackson's last council meeting and his term. And he's retiring after 20 years of public service. And so in his honor, we're going to have a little reception tomorrow night at Bodega Brew. After the council meeting, I will try not to have an executive session tomorrow night so that we can all, the party, go down and celebrate his years of service. And we would love to have anyone that's here to join us tomorrow night. And it will be immediately following our council meeting. So, Mr. Jackson, we hope that you can, you can be there. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for personnel and the... All in place, please, I say aye.